Good morning, we're gonna start now. Morning. It's a public hearing, the committee is hold regarding bills number 160170, 160171, 160172, and resolution number 160180. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolutions.
Bill number 160170, in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2017 through 2022 inclusive. Bill number 160171, in ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2017 capital budget. Bill number 160172, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017. Resolution number 160180, resolution providing for the approval by the council of the city of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the city of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2017 through 2021 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2016, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the mayor on January 3, 1992, bill number 1563-A, by and between the city and the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. Today, we continue the public hearing, the committee is hold to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2017 and capital program and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2017 through fiscal 2022. Today, we will hear testimony from the following departments: behavioral health, public health, Department of Human Services, Office of Supportive Housing. And, Mr. Stitt, the first person to testify is...
Dr. Arthur Evans.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, President Clark and members of city council. I'm Dr. Arthur C. Evans, Commissioner of the Philadelphia Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services. Joining me today is David Jones, Deputy Commissioner, and I'm pleased to provide testimony on my department's fiscal year 2017 operating budget. The mission of the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services, or DBHIDS, is to support a vision of recovery, resilience, and self-determination for individuals in need of our services. The proposed fiscal year 2017 operating budget totals 1,577, I'm sorry, 1 billion 577 million 373,138 dollars, an increase of 358 million 776,374 dollars over fiscal year 2016 estimated obligation levels. This increase is primarily in the Health Choices Behavioral Health Fund and is attributed to, attributed to a projected increase in the enrollment due to Medicaid expansion under the Affordable Care Act. The FY '17 operating budget request total, request of 1.6 million includes, I'm sorry, 1.6 billion includes 13.9 million in the general fund, 261 million in the grants revenue fund, and 1.3 million, 3 bil, I'm sorry, 1.3 billion in the Health Choices Behavioral Health Fund. The DBHIDS-FY budget will support 262 positions, 16 in the general fund, and 246 in the grants revenue fund. Of the 1.6 billion, 69.8 million, or 4.4 percent, is for intellectual disability and early intervention services, and 1.5 billion, or 95.6 percent, is for behavioral health services. 24.9 million is in class 100, 1.5 million is in class 200, 195,000 in class 300, 145,000 in class 400, and 1.7 million is in class 800. DBHIDS will continue to focus on fundamentally transforming the local network of care in FY '17. New initiatives planned for this fiscal year or next fiscal year include the following: addiction services expansion. This initiative will expand resources for persons with co-occurring addictions and mental health issues, including the following components: jail diversion and trauma recovery interventions will sup, will in support of, will be in support of the city's increased efforts to increase pro-social behaviors and provide alternatives to incarceration. This project significantly expands access to addiction treatment and case management services. Pre-engagement activities are designed to encourage positive growth and change and will include screening, peer support, family engagement, and outreach services. Early intervention assessments and psychoeducation services will benefit individuals at risk of developing substance use-related problems, including adolescents and their families. Medication-assisted treatment will re-link incarcerated individuals with community methadone clinics. Medication-assisted treatment will also be extended to opiate-addicted pregnant women. Second initiative is children's services transformation. New services will be established to continue the transformation of the behavioral health service system for children and families in Philadelphia. Services will include children's mobile crisis stabilization teams that will respond to children and youth, as well as their families and foster families who are experiencing emotional and behavioral health emergencies. These teams will offer in-home, as well as school-based supports, including short-term therapy, recovery planning, and service linkages. Third initiative is our public health approach to trauma. An array of community-based, trauma-informed services will be established to mitigate the impact of trauma on underserved individuals, families, and neighborhoods across the city. Program components will include efforts to increase trauma awareness and promote coping skills via community education and workshops. They will also include trauma reduction outreach response teams that will work to reduce the spread of community violence via conflict mediation facilitating service linkages and conducting community trauma awareness events. And specialized evidence-based trauma training and consultation will be provided to our behavioral health providers, community organizations, peers, family members, courts, parole, probation officers, prisons, and other system partners. There are four DBHIDS system accomplishments that I would like to briefly highlight. The first is our decade of transformation. Over the past decade, the department has fundamentally transformed the local network of care in partnership with a number of stakeholders. This transformation really has promoted a move to recovery from behavioral health challenges to strengthen the resiliency of children, for children experiencing social and emotional problems, and to offer individuals with intellectual disabilities opportunities to exercise choice and self-determination. In terms of our Intellectual Disability Services initiatives, the department serves approximately 7,600 children and adults with intellectual disabilities annually. Also, the department serves through our infant toddler early intervention program 6,400 infants and toddlers each year. And in FY '15, we served 200 more than we had accommodated in previous years. The third initiative has to do with our, our trauma initiative, and it is a multifaceted, multi-year effort to use a public health framework around addressing trauma within our community. Some of the components have included our Healing Hurt People program, which is operated by Drexel University, Mental Health First Aid, which attempts to provide and improve mental health literacy across the population, our Preventing Suicide and Self-Harm through dialectical behavioral therapy, Trauma Focus CBT, which is a, an evidence-based treatment approach for addressing trauma within children, Prolonged Exposure, which is a evidence-based treatment for the treatment of trauma in adults, and the Child and Family Traumatic Stress Intervention, which is a brief intensive intervention designed for children ages 17, 7 to 18, to decrease the negative impact of exposure to potentially traumatic events, including sexual and physical abuse, domestic violence, and motor vehicle accidents. In closing, we appreciate the continuing support of council members and the ongoing efforts to highlight behavioral health, as well as intellectual disability issues, and to secure the resources to meet the growing demand for behavioral health and intellectual disability services. My staff and I welcome the opportunity to meet with council members at your convenience to engage in further discussion regarding these issues. Similar to last year, I extend a personal invitation to you and your staff to participate in our Mental Health First Aid training.
Thank you, Dr. And good morning. Got a couple of questions. Community Schools Initiative, that I'm sure you've heard of, that we've been working on, both the mayor's office and the council, we believe it to be, it's gonna play a significant role in enhancing the educational opportunities of the child, but more importantly, create an environment for that child to actually be focused on the classroom. And as we looked at various models, one of the issues is clearly some of the behavioral health of the young people in the schools, and actually also some of the parents, because we found out that when you do an analysis, that a lot of this starts at home, unfortunately. Have you, in your department, had any interaction with the administration, Community Schools Division, or whatever we call it now, as it relates to your participation in this?
Sure, yes, we have. We have met with the new leader of that office. We've had internal discussions under the leadership of Eva Gladstein, who's the Deputy Managing Director over the Health and Human Services Organizations. And, and so I think we are poised, we've certainly been planning, we've been doing our own homework and research around community schools, we've been thinking about how the behavioral health services can fit into that model, and so we're poised to assist council and the administration in making sure that behavioral health is addressed.
Can you describe, I know it's early on, in any level of detail the specific roles you might be able to play or locations, because, and the other thing is, at what point do you think you'll be prepared to actually start looking at the schools themselves, because we're actually out, the members of council are out identifying potential locations in their council districts where we might be able to put some of this in play? So, I'm assuming that you have statistics that might be helpful in showing what the demographics are relating to individuals with behavioral health challenges?
Sure, yeah, so we, I guess I should put my, my comments a little bit in context. So, one of the things that we've been doing historically, but particularly with this administration in the school district, is we have ongoing relationships. I meet with Dr. Height fairly regularly. We, one of the things that we've been doing, to your point about demographics and needs, one of the discussions that we've been having is how do we take the resources that we have and that we're investing in the schools and target them in the areas that have the highest needs? So, that's a conversation that we've had ongoing even before the discussions around community schools has really started to emerge. Out of those discussions, we've identified certain areas of the city, certain schools that we think have high needs, that's obviously information that we would be happy to provide in, in terms of those discussions. And so, you know, I think we have a good sense of where those resources should be directed, but, you know, at this point, obviously, we're still in the early stages of trying to figure that out.
You mentioned you met with, you talked to Eva Gladstein, have you talked to Otis Hackman?
About this issue? Not about, not about this issue in particular, we've had broader discussions.
You know, he's responsible for the community schools.
Right.
So, you probably wanna...
Right, so we've not had any formal discussions with his office around this issue, but I feel pretty confident that the kinds of research, homework that we're doing now, the kind of internal conversations that we're having in the Health and Human Services Cabinet, I think are positioning us well to play the role that we need to play in that initiative.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, we have a department relatively newly formed, I think Susan Gobreski is the direct person responsible for the community schools, so I think it would be helpful if you started interacting with them. Ms. Gladstein, you wanna?
Sorry, Eva Gladstein, Deputy Managing Director for Health and Human Services. I just wanted to confirm that Susan Gobreski came to our Health and Human Services Cabinet to begin the conversation, again, on behalf of the director of the office, Otis Hackman.
Okay, all right, I just wanna go direct. Okay, thank you. There's another issue that, you know, council finds itself in the midst of, some people didn't think we should be involved in it, but we are, this whole criminal justice reform issue, we, we formed a special committee to deal with that and has all aspects and individuals and stakeholders involved in that committee, done some very good work. One of the focal points of that is obviously alternatives to incarceration, and as we found a significant, I don't have to tell you, this is what you do, significant amount of these individuals have mental health challenges, as well as addiction challenges. Have you played, or will you be in a position to play a role in a very aggressive way in working with the committee and CJAB, which is...
Sure.
And also as a part of the MacArthur Grant?
Yes, the answer to all of those is yes. We actually spend quite a bit of our time, energy, resources on the issue of the interface between behavioral health and criminal justice. In fact, I would probably say I spend a third of my time right now on forensic-related issues. We do that through a variety of means, there are a number of specialty courts, including mental health court, there's treatment courts, there, there's AMP program, and all of those specialty courts, there is a behavioral health overlay and we provide support there. In terms of CJAB, I'm a member of CJAB, I sit on the CJAB, so I'm a part of those discussions and have heard the presentation from members of council about that initiative. We also have a number of diversion programs, including the FER program, which is Forensic Intensive Recovery Program, which diverts thousands of individuals who have drug addiction each year out of the criminal justice system. Those are individuals who have been adjudicated, and their sentences are shortened in order to get them into treatment, which is a better setting for them. So, there are any number of those initiatives that we're doing, and as you develop your initiative, we certainly can be a part of that and can support your efforts around that.
Okay, thank you, look forward to that. One last question, I'm not sure if I'm, you're the person I should be asking. In significant parts of my district, probably other districts, there are like these houses that individuals, they get these houses, and they have individuals that come in either, just to put name on the street, halfway houses, you understand what I'm talking about?
Sure.
Who governs the placement and the monitoring of those particular houses?
Sure, so what you're probably referring to are recovery houses.
Yes.
And those are not licensed, they're not regulated at this point. We fund some recovery houses, we create standards for those houses, they operate under our standards, but most, we fund about 20, a little over 20 recovery houses across the city. But there are, in fact, probably in the neighborhood of about 300 in the city that are not funded by us and therefore have no contractual relationship with the city or with our department. So, there is legislation that has passed at the state level to have DEDAP, which is the, the state agency responsible for addiction, to regulate recovery houses, they're in the process of defining what a recovery house is, and putting together those regulations. Those are due to come out hopefully soon.
Okay, so is that moving through the state legislature?
That is moving, I believe, I believe that it is passed, and now they are in the process of, of actually writing the regulations to support the legislation.
Okay, are you familiar with who, what legislator is spearheading that effort?
I'm sorry?
If I could find out. I'm just wondering what legislator was spearheading that effort?
I don't know, probably Gene DiGeralimo, I would think, do you know? Okay.
That's okay, so you...
So, I'll just repeat what he said.
Yeah.
Basically, it's the secretary of DEDAP that is leading the effort to draft the regulations.
Okay.
So, the, the legislation has passed, it's really in the executive branch now to, to come up with the regulations.
Okay, and in that, another point in time, I'd like to talk to you about the ones that we are funding, I'm assuming the ones we funded, we have some level of monetary...
Oh, we have, actually, a lot of...
...monitoring oversight.
And I think that those programs do extremely well in terms of both being a good neighbor, but also providing good supportive services for individuals.
Okay, thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Dr. Evans.
Good morning, sir.
I want, just wanted to state for the record, I want to thank you and your staff for all the work you've done over your time with the city, especially in regards to the issue of autism. As you know, I've been a strong proponent for that issue, and your work and the support for not only funding, but also providing resources for the Philadelphia Autism Project has been very important for this initiative. Along those lines, the council president talked about community schools, but in addition to community schools, we're also discussing pre-K. And so, I'm curious, from the perspective of, from your office, has there been any involvement and discussions in reference to incorporating opportunities for early diagnosis of children that may be on the spectrum of autism as part of the pre-K initiative by the administration? As you know, based on, you know, your work in your office, as well as participating with the Philadelphia Autism Project and our hearings we had recently, that one of the best ways to address and identify children who may be on the spectrum of autism is that early diagnosis. So, I'm curious if there's been any conversations of incorporating that type of information in reference to information regarding pre-K facilities, because that's how my son was able to be diagnosed on autism based on our pre-K provider at the time.
Sure, and so first, let me start by thanking you for your support and being a champion around this issue. I think it makes a big difference when city agencies are trying to address these issues to have champions in city council, so we appreciate your support. In terms of pre-K, you know, we, you had the autism hearing a week or so ago, and one of the points I made in my testimony is that one of the, the challenges with autism is that you have different entities that are involved in people's lives at different points in their lives, over the lifespan, because of the way we funded those services. Fortunately, in the area of pre-K, though, one of the programs that we operate is the early intervention program. We screen about, or serve about 6,400 children, zero to three in that program. All of those children, once they reach the age of 16 months, is screened for autism, and so we're able to identify a lot of children at a very early age who are on the spectrum. The, one of the things that the, the early intervention staff, I think have done a really great job of, is continuing to expand the places where we are screening children and the places that we're touching. So, for example, the, the pre-K programs, there's a connection with those programs, and that's allowing us to identify more children. We're in the health centers, we're working with the COAs and DHS and, and the Office of Supportive Housing. So, I think all of those are opportunities for us to not only identify children who have developmental delays, but it's also because of this universal screening, an opportunity to drive, to identify children on the spectrum.
Thank you, I just hope that as part of this pre-K initiative, that type of work that your office does in reference to early intervention can be intertwined in this discussion as we talk about expanding pre-K and providing more opportunities for pre-K providers to open additional quality slots, that this type of information is provided in those daycare providers, so that way they can provide information to help, as you state, help parents have a better idea of what may be involved in the issue of autism, because as you stated, and as we also discussed in last week's Philadelphia Autism Project meeting, is that the parents have a lot of different information coming at them from various sources, from on behavioral health side, as well as the medical side, and it can be somewhat complex and challenging. However, the most important thing is getting them information as early as possible so they can work with multiple providers to help provide continuum of care. Another question I want to bring up to you, and it's more of kind of an update... Another question I want to bring up to you, and it's more of kind of an update, I know through the work of former Councilman Dennis O'Brien and former Speaker of the House, who I saw here earlier, very instrumental in introducing, getting passed Act 62 in reference to making sure that private insurers are providing services for families that have children autism spectrum. From my understanding, Secretary Dallas has been in conversations with insurance companies in that regard. Has your office been involved in those conversations and have you any additional information regarding where we are going forward?
Yes, so as you know, Act 62 requires private insurers to pay for the first 30-plus thousand dollars in cost for children who have autism. I think there have been two major problems. First, the biggest problem is that many of the insurance companies don't want to pay and we think that that's a violation of the parity laws. And then the second problem that the private insurers have, in my view, is that they don't have the continuum of services that they should have available. On the issue of parity and whether, and getting the providers to pay, there have been a number of challenges. There's actually been some litigation through CBH and Joan Ernie and within our agency. There have been ongoing conversations about that. The conversations right now are about insurance companies who haven't paid, where we've paid, and our ability through third-party liability to recoup those dollars. And so those conversations and that is being worked through now, but it's a big issue and I think, you know, in terms of the advocacy issue, I think that there continues to need, there continues to be a need to advocate around people, ensuring that insurance companies do what they should do in terms of covering those services.
And when you talk about recruitment, are you working with the law department in any type of affirmative litigation in that regard or at least having conversations?
No, what we're talking about is using the already established ways of using third-party liability when there are, when there's a primary insurer who should be covering the cost, in this case, we're the secondary insurer.
Right.
The first party needs to pay back those dollars to us.
Similar to the coordination of benefits.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, one final point I'll say, because my time is up, and I think this example is another example of too often where the city is paying for services that others should be paying for.
Exactly.
It's an economic issue that we as taxpayers in the city of Philadelphia and the Commonwealth were paying for services that private entities should be paying for.
Yes.
And too often, we've seen this issue in multiple scenarios, which ultimately causes a problem in the city of Philadelphia when we have less resources because we have other people who are not paying their fair share. And this is just one example of that regard, and sometimes we have to take additional avenues to level the playing field.
Yes, so I appreciate you understanding that issue.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair of the House, Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
First, let me say I always appreciate your availability, your good work and the good work of your department, and especially looking forward to our hearing on Friday, May the 20th. And in that regard, I know you've got a full plate and there are so many things, but let me just ask you a few questions. And as you know, I've been doing these community meetings and Councilman Dom was there the other day and before that, Councilman Maria Cano Sanchez, so I pick up a few things here and there, and they've just led me to some questions that I'm sure you're kind of working on, but I'd like to be more, a little more aware. In terms of our city, with the issues of drug addiction, it appears to me that our city right now kind of operates in silos. I think there was a drug policy in the 80s that doesn't seem to have worked out well. And now we have our prisons, we have probation, we have courts, we have drug treatment court, we have the SEPTA police, the PHA police, all kinds of stuff going on. But is it possible for your department to provide an overall guideline of the appropriate, you know, kind of interactions, ensuring that people are properly equipped to do their jobs? Is there an ability for your department, at least when it comes to interfacing with drug-addicted individuals and whatnot, to provide the overall leadership to our city departments?
Sure, I think the department actually does that, and I think that Philadelphia is very unique in our ability to do exactly what you're saying. And one of the reasons that I think Philadelphia is in a different position than almost actually any major city in the country is that we essentially have a single payer behavioral health care system here. In most cities, if you were to go to New York or you go to Chicago or LA, any major city in the country, and you were to ask the question, who are the payers for public behavioral health care services? Often, it could be the state, it could be, addiction is in one agency, mental health services are in a different agency, children are often in different agencies than adults, Medicaid is often separated from grants, and what that creates is exactly what you're saying, which is a fragmented approach to how the issue is dealt with. Philadelphia is unique in that all of those funding streams flow through one agency. And so my predecessors were very smart in recognizing that if you wanted to have a coherent policy, one of the important things to do is to structurally have a system where you had one set of people who were setting policy for that. And that, again, is what we have in Philadelphia. I think in terms of the points that you were making about the different entities, one of the things that, again, I think, and I have to give my predecessors a lot of credit for this because they set the stage for this, I think one of the things that is done here in Philadelphia, unlike many other places, is that the behavioral health system is very intentionally integrated into lots of different other places. So, you know, I mentioned the courts. So if you go into any court in Philadelphia, any of the specialty courts, there is a behavioral health presence and people who are both providing services but often advising the judges around how to access services. If you look at, you know, any number of things, you know, police or child welfare, DHS or OSH, it's one agency, our agency in this case, really trying to advise. I do think that, to your point about sort of the magnitude of dealing with addiction, it really goes beyond the Health and Human Services organizations and there are parts of addressing addiction that go beyond the work that we can do. And at the federal level, they talk about demand side and supply side, simply meaning that, you know, what we do is we try to deal with the demand side, the people who are in need of services. But there's a supply side that has to also be dealt with, and that's more of the law enforcement. So, you know, at the federal level, there is an agency that covers both of those aspects. At our level, what we try to do is to make sure that the issues around treatment, access to treatment, are really integrated across different systems and agencies.
Thank you. Could I also ask you about other departments or agencies in our city and our cooperation with surrounding counties? And the reason I bring it up is, for example, I know that the DA's office is paying for Narcan for our Philadelphia police officers, and apparently the Delaware County DA is paying for the transit police to have Narcan outside of Philadelphia in Delaware County. So the SEPTA police, who do run across a lot of drug-addicted folks, kind of coming and going, they have Narcan for their police officers in Delaware County and none for their police officers in Philadelphia. And so we have a lot of non-city entities that if they were to cooperate, I suppose, I think they don't have the kind of expertise that your department has, that if you could get the temple police, the housing police, the, you know, to, at least in some level of guidance and cooperation, I think that would be better for the efficiency in addressing the problem.
Sure, no, I absolutely agree with that. We are looking at how to expand Narcan availability, and this is an area where other entities outside of our entities, outside of us, that are very involved in that. For example, Philadelphia Police Department has Narcan available, they've had over 100 saves themselves, and we have some efforts at expanding Narcan availability. I think in the next fiscal year, we're talking about at least by 700, and many of those would include some of the people that you're talking about.
Okay, the final thing I'll talk about was the counties. And the reason it's come up, I'm just going to kind of cite some things that I kind of have heard on these community meetings. A woman has private insurance, she's in Chester County. Her daughter comes to Philadelphia and sometimes comes back to Chester. The provider tells her, "Your private insurance won't cover the treatment, you need to get public assistance." She goes, drops her private insurance, goes to public assistance, gets some level of treatment, her daughter's in Philadelphia. She goes to get services and they tell her that your insurance only covers Chester County contracted service providers, you need private insurance. That's one example. Example number two is a person comes into a treatment facility, they know it's him, but his ID expired two days earlier. No services. No, "Come in, we'll get your ID, we'll treat you in the meantime," just no services. And the third example, and there's like a lot of examples, I'm sure you know them all, but I'm just bringing up for clarity's sake. The insurance covers detoxing Monday through Friday. So someone comes in on a Friday or a Thursday, they can't service the person, the person may be heavily drug addicted and this is a chance to actually, you know, provide the service. They got to come back on Monday.
Right.
If they're going to come back on Monday, if they come back on Monday and they haven't used drugs for three days, they're not eligible for services. And you have addressed this in your new programs, but there was a gentleman who hurt himself, it was like so many, four months on opioids, and then, you know, he's off and all of a sudden, he's getting heroin because he can't get opioids for two years, and then he goes, he's not arrested, he goes to try to get some help and they tell him, "You have to either take harsher drugs with alcohol or you have to get arrested." Outside of that, you're not getting any services and, you know, I think those are problems, you know, bureaucratically and, you know, if we could work with our surrounding counties and that type of thing.
Sure, so let me take the three questions, I think I can remember all of them.
I'm sure you run across it all the time.
Yeah, well, the first one, the issue of, I live in a different county and I'm trying to get services in another county. When you are, when you have public assistance, especially for your behavioral health benefit, it is tied to your county of origin. And so if you live in Philadelphia and you have medical assistance, we are the behavioral health care payer, no matter where you show up. And so we pay for services for individuals, no matter where they are around the state. If someone in another county comes to Philadelphia and they're saying the insurance won't cover them, that is an issue with the payer in whatever county that is. And I would think that that would be a problem, that means certainly people could appeal that.
Could I interrupt just to ask you, is it possible that Philadelphia, Chester, Delaware, Bucks, Montgomery, Camden County, could you get together and get your insurance contracting kind of as a group?
I'm sorry, could we do-
Can you co-op, would it be better to cooperatively as a regional county area contract for services, get insurance, would that be better?
Sure, well, I think, I mean, I think generally the system works pretty well. I don't hear many problems like the one that you're referring to, where someone from a different county is trying to access services by a Philadelphia provider and they have a payer from a different county.
Yeah, I'm getting a look from the Council President because I'm taking a long time and I'm going to, and we can have this conversation.
Okay, we can certainly talk about it. Let me just say about the IDs, I think that's totally unacceptable that particularly if someone knows someone, you know, sometimes provider agencies can get rigid, and if that's the case, you know, those are the kinds of incidences that we need to know. There's a whole initiative to make sure that people get IDs, again, Eva Gladstein has been very instrumental in doing that, which turns out to be a really important issue for people having access to services. So there are a number of things, but I'd be happy to talk with you about that offline.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome. Dr. Evans and Deputy Commissioner Jones. Dr. Evans, you know, I have long been a fan of your longevity and your commitment to the field of behavioral health, and just want to say for the record that I thank you for the leadership that you've provided to this very important department in the city of Philadelphia for so many years. I was a staffer when Estelle Richmond was here and CBH was a concept and a mine and people thought she was crazy. But I was here as a staffer and watched her, and then I watched the work that she did as our secretary in Harrisburg, as a legislator, particularly from a home healthcare perspective. So I've long been an admirer of your work and just wanted to say that. I want to turn your attention to page seven of 14 of your testimony, and you provide a list for us, a financial summary, and these are the, no, yeah, these are the largest, let me see if it's this page, no, it's actually page 11 of 14. This is the MWDSBE participation in large contracts, and this is on page 11 of your testimony. And Resources for Human Development is listed at 17 million, NHS 16 million, PHMC 12 million, Wood 7, and Horizon House 6. And when I look at, right under that, you have a chart where you list their workforce executives and then the board, and you give us, you know, what the percentage of minority or female for each of these entities. But if you turn to page 13, I really love the staff demographics that you laid out, where you specifically noted the number that were African-American, the number that were male, and the number that were African-American and female. And so my ask of you today is, when I look at RHD, for example, and I see that 85% of their workforce is minority or female, do we have a breakdown of the number who are African-American minority and the salaries that those employees make? And if we're talking about the executive branch, do we have that done from an African-American, a Latino, or Hispanic? Do we have that data for each of these companies?
Okay, so I don't know if we have the drill down to that level, but I can find out whether we do or not. But just from my knowledge of our provider system, I can tell you that in the behavioral health world, the overwhelming majority in many of the organizations is African-American in terms of staff, so, and many of them are African-American women, so they're sort of double counted in terms of those numbers.
So we could, that would be great, Dr. Evans, for us to actually see, and actually see the sort of pay scales, right? And what the positions are that each of them hold. And so if we say, you know, it's sort of an executive level, how many executive directors, how many CFOs, and that information, so if you could forward that to the Council President for distribution to all members of council, that would be great. And the reason why I ask that is because now it is becoming less taboo and people understand that challenges associated with behavioral health, you know, mental health is not something to be ashamed of. We too need to, from a management perspective, because it's also a big business. And so as I'm thinking about those who are receiving the support and the services, and that truly reflects a minority, a heavily a minority constituency, I'm thinking about the bench of providers.
Absolutely.
And those who are having the opportunity to be trained and gain the skill set so that they can eventually have the opportunity to become executives and run agencies like RHD or NHS. And I am, it's almost like talking about the STEM industry and science, technology-
Sure, absolutely.
engineering, and math, and we look at the lack of a presence of African Americans and other people of color. For me, if you don't see it and have the opportunity to experience it, you never know that this is a particular industry where you can add value. So one day I would like to be able to look at the board of these entities and see a person of color from Philadelphia there, you know, who's chairing, or the CFO, who learns the business of being a provider. And so I wanted you to know, that's the crux and the spirit of the question and the data that I just asked you.
Yeah. And I really appreciate that question and I think, you know, I think that there've been a lot of, there's been a lot of progress in this area. And I'll give you a couple of examples, because I hear the spirit in what you're saying. You know, the, well, let me start with the data and the reality, right? So I think part of what you were alluding to is that even if you have an organization where the majority of the
Employees.
Employees are minority members, when you look at the management, it shifts very radically. That is true in our industry. That's true in lots of industries, it's true in our industry, not across the board, but generally speaking. I think there are a few things that we're doing to try to deal with that. One of them is that we have a whole range of internships within my agency. So we have interns who are high school students, who are college, bachelor's level, master's prepared, doctoral level, and postdoctoral. We have people from public health, from law, from, obviously from the behavioral health industries. And in fact, one of the things that I did early on in my tenure is to create a joint postdoc with University of Pennsylvania. So people spend half of their time at University of Pennsylvania doing research, half of their time in my agency doing policy level work. And the whole idea is to get people who may not be thinking about a career in behavioral health, interested in behavioral health. And I can say, I did this in Connecticut and the person who's running the system is an African American woman who came in in a similar kind of arrangement. So I know that that kind of arrangement works. And the other thing that we're doing, I think, in this regard is, we just made, I just made a challenge to all of our executive directors to really stretch this year and hire young people for summer jobs. Because one of the reasons that I do what I do now, I'm in policy, is because I had exposure to policy positions. I mean, it just wasn't something that I had thought about. And so we put out a challenge to all of our providers to stretch this year, to hire young people, because I think that that will expose people to a whole industry and a career that they couldn't, didn't see. We're doing that ourselves, we're gonna hire at least thirty people. Every time I say that, my staff go, "Where are we gonna, how are we gonna?" We're gonna figure it out. Because that's gonna give young people an opportunity to see something that they may not even be thinking about right now.
Well, I know the bell is rung, Mr. President, if you would just grant me just thirty more seconds, I wanted to say, one, I appreciate that. And if in fact this council can be supportive in reaching out to members of the community to fill any of those internship opportunities, that would be great. Also, I would, you know, I'm always reminding people about the smaller institutions of higher learning. And, you know, I'm biased because I love that place that Langston Hughes and Thurgood Marshall and Namdi Azikiway came from.
Mm-hmm.
That happens to be my alma mater, Lincoln University. And if Councilwoman Janie from Chaney was here, she would tell you, "We need to make sure that Chaney University is included." So I'll talk with you afterwards.
Yes.
If there's any connection that we can make. But when I come around on the, for the second round, a lot of talk about opioids, I want you to tell me about this phase and craze that's not getting a lot of attention. It's really interesting, when I was in Harrisburg, council president, opioids and heroin addiction is now, is now getting a lot of attention. And I found it really interesting, because some of us have been hollering about those challenges for many, many years. And now, all of a sudden, even in the Pennsylvania House, this had become a major issue because it had been reaching communities that many people thought were exempt. I mean, I literally heard things from time to time, like, you know, you know, "Well, you know, we don't have that." You know, those people, you know, had that challenge. But now it's reached into communities where they know that their race, ethnicity, nothing exempts you from the horrors of addiction associated with opioids. Now it's a lot of attention. I haven't heard a lot about this thing called synthetic joint. And, no, I'm, I was born in seventy-two, it's called synthetic marijuana.
I thought you were gonna say synthetic Mary Jane or something.
But as I talk to some providers, particularly a friend of mine who had been doing work in West Philadelphia, and some in Northwest Philadelphia, they said, "With our young people, you know, they are seeing definitely an increase in the level of overdose doses and sometimes deaths with young people who are consuming this." So I know my time's up, Mr. President. If on the next round you could give us some follow-up about that trend, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
How are you? I just have a general question and I'm trying to understand your budget. But the way, in your testimony, I guess on page seven, it said in 2016, the budget was 1.218 billion roughly, and in 2017, it's 1.577 billion. It's a $360 million difference, which is pretty much related to increased costs in the Affordable Care Act. That's really the big shot there.
Yes, exactly.
So my question to you, and I don't have the answer to this, but I'm asking this, is in 2016, of the 1.2 billion, what percent, what was the number funded by the city, state, federal, or anyone else? How does that break down?
Okay.
And then how does it break down for next year?
Right. So our budget has been proportionally pretty much the same, you know, for the last couple of decades. The, if you take this year's budget, 1.2 billion, about 1% is City General Fund, only fourteen million dollars. The other ninety-nine percent of our budget comes through the state and is a combination of state and federal dollars.
So that was for fifteen, that was for the sixteen budget?
And that's true, it's true for, it's true for the next fiscal year as well.
So when we
It's about, the proportions are the same.
Okay. So then when we have a $360 million increase in that Affordable Care Act, we're only, it's costing us 3.6.
Well, the, when you look at our budget, you have, when we set the budget each year, we set a maximum that we think we may get. So the reality is, we're not gonna get that much. And first of all, the 360 million, it breaks down to about 340 million will be from the Health Choices Program, and then about eighteen million from the General Fund, in terms of the increased appropriation. So if you take the 340 million, where we're saying that is primarily due to anticipated increases related to the Affordable Care Act, we may not realize all that. In fact, we probably won't realize all of that. But when we set the budget, we try to target the maximum that we may potentially get through those increases.
So from the city's perspective, what should we be looking at as far as sixteen versus seventeen, costing the city of Philadelphia differential?
So it won't cost the city anything different. The fourteen, it's approximately fourteen million dollars that we get from the City General Fund, almost all of that is match for the state grants that we get. So the ratio is for every dollar that the city puts in, we're able to draw nine dollars from the state. And so that number has remained relatively consistent over the last ten years. It's been roughly about fourteen, fifteen million dollars. And so the city isn't being asked to put in any additional dollars in order to draw down revenue. And so that remains flat. The Health Choices funding, the Medicaid funding is different. We get paid on a capitated basis, which means that for every Philadelphian, for every Philadelphian who is on medical assistance, we get a capitated payment or a per member per month payment. And because those numbers, the number of people who have medical assistance is going up, that's why we're anticipating an increase in revenue in that fund.
So the bottom line, if I understand it correctly, is that last year it cost the city about fourteen million, and this year it should cost the same?
About roughly the same, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanna follow up on some of the comments that Councilwoman Parker made, and also wanna thank Councilman O for his leadership in regards to the opioid issue. I had a chance to learn about this issue in more detail when I had a chance to tour some of the methadone clinics with Roland Lamb from your office and really got an understanding of the issue and some of the sighting and locations. I also know the National League of Cities has been very involved in trying to address this on a national perspective. But one of the things that came up in those conversations a few years ago was the issue reference to sighting of locations. I know that your office had worked with, like, Councilman Joan Kuduski and spent a lot of time working with NET, referencing the sighting of a location on State Road. But then in the past couple of years, there's been additional locations that are opening up in the city under the pain management perspective. And I was somewhat shocked to find out that they did not have to even contact the local office of, no, your office, to even let you know about this location being opening in the city of Philadelphia, although they got approved at the state level. And it was a real disconnect from that perspective. Has there been any change in that regard? And then one other follow-up question I have, in reference to medical marijuana, as you know, that legislation was recently passed, I think it was Act 16. So I'm at Governor Wolf and I'm gonna be looking to have hearings on that issue. So I'm curious, from your perspective, what's your thoughts on that as well?
Sure, okay. So let me sort of clarify the difference between methadone or medication assisted treatment and pain management. The major difference is that the pain management clinics are purportedly designed to help people with physical pain, physical challenges that they may be having. So that is not under our purview at all, and so those clinics have no relationship to the behavioral health world, they have no obligation to let us know. They do have licensing issues that they have to deal with. Medication assisted treatment, on the other hand, or methadone clinics, are obviously related to the treatment of addiction. And when those programs are created, they are not required to come to us. Most often they do because we are a payer and most often, to be economically viable, they need to come to us to be paid. There are instances though where, a couple of instances where providers have, because they can go directly to the state, get a license, and then open up shop, there have been a couple of instances where those programs have essentially done that, bypassing us. But for the most part, providers do come to us because they know that they need to get our refunding, get our funding. And then on the medical marijuana thing, so I'll give you my personal view, we haven't really discussed this internally. I personally believe that incarcerating people for addiction doesn't make any sense. So I am a big proponent of decriminalization. I think that when you go beyond the medical use, as has happened in other places, I think that that can be problematic. But I think in terms of, you know, the kinds of restrictions and, you know, look from state to state, there are, the level of restriction are different. You know, my understanding of the Pennsylvania law is that it's a little more restrictive than other places, and I think that that's probably wise.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. So I'm just picking up where we left off.
Sure.
Okay, so, yeah, we were talking about the woman whose daughter, you know, was not able to get services. And, you know, at least from, at least from the community meetings and whatnot, I do feel that there was a time where, you know, the counties felt like drug addiction was a city problem and whatever happened in the city, that was none of their concern. And basically, "You treat our folks, but we don't treat your folks."
Exactly.
Type of mentality. And now it just seems, you know, I think Bucks County has more deaths from drug overdoses than Philadelphia County. Anyway, it just seems that the people are moving back and forth, you know, Bucks County, Philadelphia County, Camden County, Bucks County, going around a lot. And, you know, so many of the people who kinda tell their tales one way or the other, obviously are telling, you know, very, you know, very personally felt tragedies through the death of their children, for example. And so, you know, they are very concerned that there's a chance to help after years and years of struggling and going broke and all that stuff and, you know, they just, this may have occurred just before, you know, a child died. So it is to them like a very big deal. And to me, I have to wonder, if they finally get the child and they try to get, people don't understand all these differences, the bureaucracies.
Sure, right.
When you can't get, is there a way to, to kind of coordinate these services?
Yeah. So I think, if I'm getting the underlying gist of the question, I think that the issue of what happens when someone shows up at the door, you know, and I was a treatment provider for many years before I came into government. You know, my position has always been, as a practitioner, to treat the person, address the needs, figure out the money part of it later. It's not always the case. And I think you probably are hearing from people where that may not be the approach that people are taking. But I think, you know, just in terms of kind of going back across the different questions that you asked earlier, I think the idea that, you know, a treatment program would ask someone to come back because it's Friday is absurd. And to the extent that we have providers, I know one of the things that Roland Lamb has been doing with our providers is making sure that, you know, we don't have, or they don't have policies like that. We just issued an RFP yesterday. And, you know, in that RFP, we specifically wrote, and this was, this was for mental health and, mental health and addiction services, we specifically wrote, "You have to have policies to address people's needs 24 hours a day, seven days a week." I mean, I think that that should be standard, but sometimes providers have policies that evolve in ways that I don't think are consistent with the spirit of that.
Well, I agree with you, but I will say that it appears to me that there's far more people who need help than there's space available. And, you know, the provider, they need to pay their folks and pay the rent and everything else and it's, you know, wouldn't it be a change in the system to ensure that payment is made available for services seven days a week?
I'm sorry, I didn't hit the last part.
To change the system, so rather than having the providers provide free services and then try and get reimbursed, that they knew that if they provided services over the weekend, they would in fact be reimbursed.
Oh, they will get paid. I mean, the issue is not that they won't get paid. The issue is that for administrative convenience, they have reduced hours, they reduce staffing, and I get why providers might wanna do that, because it saves costs. But the reality is that if you are providing addiction, and to your point, someone who's ready today may not be ready an hour from now, let alone two days from now. And so I think if we're gonna have a responsive system, we have to have, to the extent possible, treatment on demand. And so that means when people show up at the door, they should be admitted. And, you know, we're gonna have to figure out how to make sure that providers can afford to do that. But I think it's incumbent upon them to raise the issue that we're not able to serve people that are showing up at our doors because, you know, the rate or those kinds of things. I'm willing to have that conversation. The conversation that I'm not willing to have is that, you know, for our administrative convenience, we're not gonna admit someone. That is not acceptable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Evans, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that issue regarding the synthetic marijuana.
I'm gonna ask Roland Lamb to come up. He's our deputy commissioner, newly minted about two weeks now, but for many years has run our addiction services and really is, really a national expert on these issues. And so I'm gonna give him an opportunity to respond. And, uh, so I'm going to give him an opportunity to respond.
Good morning, Council. Um, my name is Roland Lamb. I am the Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Behavioral Health and Disability Services. I am also the outgoing director for the Office of Addiction Services. Uh, Councilwoman, um, the idea of synthetic marijuana or K2 and spice have been, you know, um, prevalent and pervasive for many years now. It's becoming worse because of the fact that, um, uh, the manufacturers of K2 and spice have adulterated the drug. Initially, it was problematic because, um, there was no identifiable formula or chemical makeup for this drug that people could identify in terms of urinalysis or, uh, testing. Um, and it, it has been a moving target in that respect because of the fact that people have been able to actually, in some cases, get the drug over the internet, uh, and made it, you know, quite available. But it's also been adulterated by synthetic cannabinoids. Um, and, and I actually feel that the, the determination of K2 and spices being synthetic marijuana is really a misnomer. We should call it what it is. It's, it's actually a designer drug.
Designer drug?
Designer drugs, in actuality. Uh, there are about 32, uh, chemical combinations that people have identified, uh, right now that could, could qualify as K2 and spice. Uh, we have a problem, but the, we have a people problem. There's more than a drug problem. In fact, that we have, you know, folks that are, are, are looking for alternatives, looking for, uh, chemical alternatives and finding them and, you know, in what we normally would not say are non-traditional places, you know, is the problem right now. We also now have people who are taking advantage of that in this, in this country and are, and are putting all kinds of adulterants into different kinds of makeup. But for instance, um, uh, if we use the term spice, well, the idea is that if you, if, if, if you're going to put, um, uh, uh, chemicals over, you know, spray chemicals over tobacco or spray chemicals over, um, uh, uh, other kinds of herbs, for instance, um, they can have, you know, a devastating effect on young people. And, um, uh, one of the things that we, we have to combat is the fact that we have a lot of young people who are using over-the-counter medications. We have a lot of young people who are exposed to K2 and spice. And we also have a lot of young people that are being now exposed to the medicine cabinet, where they, you know, they're, they're experimenting with drugs in that, in that way. Um, uh, we're also concerned about the fact that we're seeing more incidences of dextromethorphan in decedents in the city of Philadelphia, uh, in combination with other drugs. In fact, I must say this, that when we talk about drug overdoses, we're talking about a minimum of, of five drugs that we're seeing in, you know, uh, in, in, in decedents in, you know, in the medical examiner's office.
So and I'm, okay, so in the five drugs, say those, so we'll know them again?
Well, I, I don't know what they all, it's different combinations of drugs. What I'm trying to say is, is that it's just not one drug anymore. We have a number of drugs that people are taking, whether it be benzodiazepines, whether it be, you know, opiates, uh, whether it be, um, amphetamine type drugs, whether it be alcohol in combination with all of the above. We, uh, you know, whether we have dextromethorphan, whether we have synthetic cannabinoids, you know, all kinds of other drugs that are, that are available for people, um, to take. And part of the problem is that we are now, the variety of drugs that people have access to is really part of the problem that we have.
Well, listen, I want to thank you for your expertise and for putting that valuable information on the record for us. And Dr. Evans, I, I too need to say thank you. I've been hosting a series of town hall meetings. I started in my legislative district. I've continued that effort as a councilperson. Um, we host these meetings in every region or wards, which is like sort of the political address that we will give them. And your office has always been there. And so when they stand up to sort of give an overview of the office, it's one of those offices where you hear people listen, but when they go back to their table, you see people quietly go over to the table to get the brochure and to get the information because they don't want to stand up in the community meeting at large to talk about the need to connect to your department. So I want to, you know, I know it's tough. Those meetings are in the evening. Your people like, you know, they start at usually at seven. They don't, you know, not over until nine, nine fifteen, but your people have been there and they've stayed to connect with the community after hours. So I needed to commend those who are not sitting at the table but are out in the neighborhoods in the evening. Thank you.
Um, thank you. And I really appreciate you, um, mentioning that because, you know, the department has really tried to reach into the community. We, what we recognize is that if we're going to be effective, we can't build little treatment programs in the community and then expect people are going to figure out how to get there and understand the, the services. And so, um, I want to also publicly thank my staff who, uh, work weekends and evenings, um, after they've worked a long day. So I appreciate you acknowledging that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President.
She recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. So just kind of wrapping up now, um, so I, I, I do for, for the people who may be listening or watching, um, I would like to note that since 2000, there's been a 200% increase in deaths from heroin and opioids. Uh, in 2014, there were 47,000 drug overdose deaths, about half from heroin and opioids. So that, so there is, is, is this problem. And we've just, uh, kind of legalized medical marijuana, but I understand that you cannot get medical marijuana until after, um, there has been a failure in, you know, your ability to get favorable pain relief from opioids. Is, is that the case? I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah. You know what? I, I have not looked at that legislation, so I don't know all the ins and outs of it. Well, you know, I'll be reviewing it, you know, over the next, um, weeks or so. But I don't know the specifics of that legislation. What I do know is that, uh, in comparison to some other states, it's a little more restrictive than, uh, in some other states. I just don't know the details at this point.
So me personally, uh, I would just think that there's been no deaths from, from marijuana that I'm aware of, just from smoking it medically or otherwise. But, you know, from opioids, uh, which are very addictive, there's just a lot of prescriptions written. I, I wouldn't understand why we wouldn't just leave that to the doctors, like, let them prescribe this or prescribe that. Why they have to fail at the opioids before they get medical marijuana? You know, my mother is 95. She, she fell, hurt her hip and she has opioids right now. It worries me a lot at her age that she's getting opioids. Now, my mother, the wife of, of my father, who's a pastor, I cannot imagine her smoking marijuana right at all.
Right, yeah.
But I would prefer her smoking marijuana than taking all these pills.
Absolutely.
Laying in bed. I just think it would be smarter, uh, alternative. And I just wonder, where's that legislation in the state?
Sure. Well, I, I tell you, as a clinician, I, I always think it's, um, poor practice to have a fail-first policy. It, it just never works. And I, I agree with you completely that clinicians ought to be able to figure out what the best course of treatment is and, and do that. So completely agree with you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also I want to thank you publicly too for, um, uh, doing the, um, uh, doing the forums. Uh, I have not personally gone there because I want people to feel free to say whatever they want to, but we do have people there and, uh, we appreciate you, um, and the, the stance that you've taken around this issue.
Thank you. I can tell you that your person is every meeting.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Councilman. And just for the record, uh, the reference to smoking marijuana was a hypothetical, sir. Just want to make sure.
(laughing)